Today is March the eighth, twenty twenty-three, and today we are here with Steve Trafton, who's running for the Amarillo A I S D Board of Trustees. Steve, welcome.
Thank you very much, Dan. I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you today.
Very good. Well, let's uh, let's tell our voters a little bit about why you're running for the A I S D and if you want to start off talking about yourself and a little bit about your history, so they can get a feel for who you are.
Sure, you bet. Uh, raised here in Amarillo, uh, sixty, be sixty-four before the election happened. So I've been here quite a few years. Uh, my family was here. My grandfather started a printing company back in nineteen fifty and he passed away and, and uh, in sixty-seven and my dad took it over and, and ran it. And uh, my dad passed away in eighty-three and my brother and I took it over with a, a printing company called Trafton Printing here. So it started back in, in nineteen fifty and my brother and I ran that. And then we, we sold that company back in nineteen ninety-eight to a publicly traded company out of, uh, out of Colorado. And uh, they gave us both a, you know, a, a one-year contract to stay on with them. And but we ended up staying on for, I stayed on for the next seventeen years. So I've retired from that seven years ago, but I've been here all my life. I went to school at, uh, grade school at Avondale and from Avondale, I moved over to Sam Houston and Sam Houston to Tascosa. So went to, you know, went to public school here all, all my, all my life. And then I went to Amarillo College for a year and then I transferred down to, to Texas Tech and went to school down at Texas Tech before coming back here and, and joined in my, my father and my, uh, my brother. And we had two other partners in the, in the printing business. So uh, been here, like I said, been here all my life. I love Amarillo. Uh, married, my wife and I have been married for thirty-eight years. We have two kids, uh, grew up here. Uh, they now have, uh, I've got five grandkids, you know, that, that are just beginning. I've got a, a nine-year-old and two seven-year-olds, a five-year-old and a one-year-old. So we're just, we're, we're starting into, uh, public schools and, uh, you know, and I, uh, probably the reason, uh, that I got involved in thinking about running for the, for the school board is, uh, you know, my daughter, uh, she's got a third, third grader over at, at Puckett. And you know, they had some changes this year in some of the curriculum that brought things to the attention of, of, uh, you know, some of the parents on, you know, maybe an agenda that seemed to be being introduced through that agenda, through some of the, you know, some of the topics that they had the kids reading. And so I just, you know, I started listening to that, started listening to her. And uh, one of the things that I felt real strongly about, Dan, is whenever my, my kids were young, you know, I mean, I had one thing in mind for my kids is I wanted them protected, protected and I wanted them safe. And when they went to school, I expected the school systems to, you know, keep them safe and to teach them. And I wanted them to teach basics. Uh, you know, my wife and I were, uh, were strong Christians. We have our, we have our morals and our values and we instill those in our kids and teach those at home. And I don't, I don't need that taught in the school system. I think the school system has got to figure out where their lane is and where it's not. And uh, that's one of the, one of the reasons that, you know, one of the main reasons is, is watching out for, for my, my grandkids, but also watching out for all the other, all the other, you know, kids that are going to school. You know, we have thirty thousand kids that are, you know, that are registered in, in Amarillo Independent School District. That's a, you know, we have a big job protecting those kids. Uh, you know, I also, you know, being a, um, you know, being in the business field, I have a, a, you know, an understanding also. You know, I love Amarillo and I want Amarillo to continue to grow. And you know, I know that there are qualities of life, the civic center issue, things like that, you know, that, that we say that we have to have to bring companies to town. But I'm telling you, companies, when they come to Amarillo, you know, of course they want quality life, but they also want to have a school system that they, you know, can trust to put their, their, uh, their kids in. And I think that is, you know, in the top three or four things that Amarillo has got to be consistent on and providing a quality product to.
Yeah. Well, I think most people want, and businesses too. I mean, a business wants to go to a place where they have good schools, good streets, good infrastructure, a well-managed community, low taxes. And if you have those things, they could care less about a convention center.
Those, you know, convention center, you know, convention centers for, you know, for the public doesn't mean as much as what it means for the, the, uh, traffic that's brought in that provides us with taxes, you know, sales tax, so we don't have to raise our property taxes.
Well, I don't, it's not a necessity, but if it's a viable entity or a viable project, private businesses, a private entity will provide it.
Mm-hmm.
If there's a demand and it will produce income over and above its expense, a private business will provide it. Or you could go to the, uh, the bond boys and they will look at it and you can sell revenue bonds
Mm-hmm.
Uh, to provide for that facility rather than put it on the back of the property taxpayers. I've never understood why anybody thinks a, um, something that's not a necessity like that would be put on the back of the property taxpayers. Because somebody that owns a house in South Lawn, how does that convention center benefit them?
Well, probably the guy that owns the house in South Lawn, it doesn't benefit them to the extent that it benefits Amarillo as a whole, bringing outsiders in that spend money here as tourists and, you know, for conventions and things like that. So, you know, I mean, you know, there's, there's, there's only two ways that we're going to be able to fund the city. And it's either through sales taxes or through, through property taxes. And you know, I think everyone would love to say, let's, let's fund this through sales taxes. Well, I think that that's great. That's the way I would prefer it done. But sometimes you have to make investments in Amarillo to be able to create the, create the opportunity for sales taxes to be created.
Right. You got, sales tax come from business activity.
That's exactly right.
So you want to encourage businesses to do activity.
Yeah. And businesses, businesses are really looking for additional growth. And there's nothing quite, quite like having someone from out of town that just plops in here for, you know, for the farm and ranch show or for the, for the rodeo and, you know, spends, drops fifteen hundred, three thousand dollars while they're here for the weekend and off they're gone. I mean, that is great that, that isn't expected for every resident to have to pick up that burden.
Yep. So you're running for the school board. What are the, what is, what do you think has caused this uh, curriculum and, uh, issues that you're talking about? How's that crept into our schools in Amarillo?
Well, you know, I'd like to say that I know everything, but I don't, so I'll just start there. So this is my, this is my perception. Uh, you know, Amarillo, you know, I mean, the school district does a great job. I mean, we have amazing people, teachers that work there, you know, and everyone is trying to, you know, continue to raise the level, uh, you know, of the education. And so everyone's looking for, you know, you know, new methods, uh, new strategies on teaching to improve, you know, the quality of education and the learning of students, uh, you know. So, you know, just, you know, for instance, the reason that I got involved in this is over the elementary schools, uh, brought in a, a new curriculum called the amplified, uh, you know, version. And, um, my, my son-in-law, you know, my son-in-law is a, is, you know, has his master's in English. He no longer teaches, but you know, whenever he was looking at that, he said, you know, he said, I've looked at, at how the model teaches and he said, it is a great model. The only issue, and I don't think any of the parents that, that went and visited, uh, you know, and had conversation with the school board was about the model. What they were about was the content that was being used, teaching those, that, that model. Uh, you know, there were some very sexual, uh, you know, explicit, uh, you know, stories that were in there. Uh, maybe it wasn't the whole story, but it was enough to, you know, get the kid's attention to say, hey, I want to go on and read the rest of this book or the rest of this story. You would never let your, you know, your nine-year-old kid go and read that, you know. But did it, was it a good example, you know, for that one teaching, uh, you know, uh, skill that day? Probably worked out really good for that, but you know, I mean, the parents, they said, you know, we've got to make sure and look at the content that's being, that's being introduced to our kids at such an early age. And so, you know, so that, you know, you know, I, I think, and I was at the board meeting when, uh, Mr. Loomis, the superintendent, said, you know, we were, we had our eyes, our focus and our filter was based on looking at a model that would teach our kids and grow our kids in, in reading and literature. And he said, I think we took our lens off on what the stories were and what was being brought in. You know, if you look, you know, the Texas Board of Education creates the, the teaks that they tell all the publishers. These are the teaks that have to be taught, you know, to our, to our students. And then the publishers go out and they create and publish the curriculum and bring it back and say, you know, we've covered every one of these. Okay, good. They present those to the schools. We all know where all these big publishers come from. They're not, they're not Texas publishers. You know, they're publishers out of, you know, back east, out of New York, areas like that. They don't have the same, they don't have the same morals and values that we have in Amarillo. I, I just fully believe that, you know. And I think that, you know, I don't want to be a conspiracy theorist, but I believe that there's an agenda that's going on. We can all sit back and go, oh, come on, Steve, you know. But I believe there's an agenda that we're trying to take what they've done in higher education to have this, you know, have this Marxist, this communistic, you know, view of trying to socialize everyone. And they're trying to go, okay, we've got it done in higher education and the colleges, let's bring this down to the local level now. Let's introduce this earlier and try to, you know, create and create, you know, more activists out of our students rather than educate our students. Maybe that's a little bit more than you wanted me to go on to, but that's kind of my feelings towards, you know, I want, I want schools to teach basics.
Reading, writing.
Reading, writing, math, history, history. I mean, more history. We've got to know where we came from.
They don't want, they don't want to teach history.
No, they want to rewrite history.
Well, I would think, so they, why wouldn't it be incumbent upon the teachers to provide the lesson plans for their students? Why are we buying curriculum? Isn't that what we pay teachers to do, to come up with their own lesson plans? And you create that diversity that students can benefit from because different teachers teach different ways. And, and you know, I would think that the school administration would maybe approve of that teacher's lesson plan. But I think it, I would assume that you would have that teacher produce that plan, not buy a canned plan. Am I wrong?
Well, I mean, there is, there is probably the ability to, to debate both sides of that. Uh, you know, and, you know, for me going to, you know, to the board meetings and listening to the, to, to both sides, the pros and cons, you know, whenever teachers come in and they have to do a lesson plan, they have to make sure that those teaks are covered e- each week. And so they're teaching something and, you know, and, you know, one of, one of the, you know, the, uh, department heads for the school went out and surveyed and asked their teachers, you know, where do you get your, where do you get your contact, your, your content, your resources to make sure and cover that, you know? They get out on, you know, they have to go find a book. They have to search the internet, you know? And they, they surveyed them and they said that there was like up to like thirteen hundred different resources that teachers were using to cover and teach those teaks. I mean, did anyone vet those? You know, so that, you know, I, I, I see a flaw in that, you know, coming out of, you know, I was in the printing business. I mean, we had, we had standard operating procedures, you know? I want to make sure that, you know, we have standard operating procedures that we, that, that we can all work with inside. But I want to equip and I want to use, let, let teachers use their, their talents and their, their gifting to be able to teach our kids. But, you know, I mean, as we probably know, you know, teachers are going to come at, at, at issues differently. And so we've got to, you know, I mean, once we open up that rain, then we have the ability of wondering what is being taught in that room. So, so I, you know, I can see both sides of that, you know, of that equation. But, you know, I think that we have to start with something that is, that has a, you know, that has boundaries on it. And this is the, this is the foundational that has to be taught. And, you know, I know that they've taken this, they've taken this amplified version and they have gone back and they have washed that thing. And they have put that through a filter to go in and take out all of those, all of those stories that, you know, that, that have an agenda to them and get those replaced. So that's going to come out next year and I'm sure there's going to be a lot of teachers or a lot of parents for sure that are watching that very closely to see, you know, what all, what all was filtered, filtered out and what stayed and what they replaced it with.
So what's the role of the school board?
Well, the school board, you know, uh, I'm, I'm starting to try to get my hands wrapped around that. But the school board, you know, we, we have one person that we're in charge of and that's the superintendent. We hire and fire the superintendent. And after that, you know, he is the CEO and he runs, runs the school, uh, you know, from that. And we oversee the job that he does. You know, so much of what comes into the school, and I'm talking out of school because, you know, I haven't served yet and hopefully I will get the chance. But, uh, you know, the state has a lot, the state and the government, the feds, you know, send, send in things that they want to make sure it's brought in. You know, the state sends, uh, out of the money that's, that's raised, the state provides close to sixty percent of the budget. Uh, I think it's, I think it's around, I think it's around sixty and then locals in the, uh, thirty-six and then the, the, the feds give around five percent of our budgets. Feds, whenever they send that in, from what I'm told, it's here are these funds available, but to get this, you have to do these things. And, you know, I, I, you know, from what I'm hearing, you know, you'll find issues like you will have transgender bathrooms if you take this money, you know, and so.
Take the money.
Don't take the money.
Yeah.
Don't take the money. Yes, yes. You know, so I'm not exactly sure, but I know that the, that the state has a big role in what, what happens, you know, at the school level that the board has no, you know, no real authority over. The board does set policies for the, for the school district, uh, you know, around that. And, you know, we work within the budget reviewing, uh, you know, expenditures that are, you know, that are needed to approve that. Uh, I believe they also work closely with the superintendent on employee issues. So I'd like to say I, I have a real good grasp of it, but I can't tell you much more than that, Dan.
So it's an important position for sure.
Well, it's a, you know, it's a two-hundred-and-eighty-million-dollar budget annually. You know, and the, and the thing that we have to realize, and I know this year, you know, there's a, there's a, a lot of conversation going on for school vouchers, school choice, you know, being able to do that. And I know Governor Abbott was in town last week and he is pushing that. Dan Patrick is pushing that. So, uh, you know, and, and, and the comment around that is, you know, if we give parents choices, you know, quality will have to rise up because we'll have competition. I, I get that. I mean, I, I'm a capitalist. I came, I came out of the business field. I, I understand, you know, the, the only way that I'm going to get another, someone else's customer is to do a better job than they're doing, you know? So, so I, I do understand that. I wish rather than, you know, us talk about school vouchers, I wish our governor would talk about education reform, you know? And what can we do to reform education and start getting out of this, you know, this, this D E I, diversity, inclusion, equity? I mean, all of that stuff that we're into, you know, it, it just, it's not in the lane of what schools are responsible for.
Yeah. D E I should D I E.
Should get out.
Yeah.
Exactly. Exactly.
Well, because now they're going to have to compete possibly, so everything they've taught is wrong.
All right. Tell me that again. Say that, say that to me again.
Because the governor's pushing school vouchers, so the public schools are going to have to up their game.
They're going to have to up their game.
Well, but they're telling everybody, you don't have to up your game because everybody's the same and, and everybody should, is equal. And, uh, you should only produce, you know, if, if, if it benefits you and, uh, basically what Mark said, you know, everybody should, I forget the exact quote, but basically you should, some should produce, but those who won't produce are able to eat the production of the others. And that doesn't work for very long. I mean, that's what they tried in Jamestown and they nearly starved.
Sure.
Because they had a socialist system and, um, so it's, it doesn't work.
That's trying to live, that's trying to live in utopia, you know? I mean, that is not real world. We're trying to, we're trying to, to create the end result and make it fair for everyone. I've never, you, you've never seen life being fair in your, in your years, have you?
Is not fair.
It's not fair.
It's never fair. Bad things happen and you have to deal with them and you just have to keep going until you solve the problem.
Exactly. You know, I've been reading, trying to get, you know, caught up as much as I can on the education system and, and just reading, you know, what this, this equity, equity sounds like a good word. And, and I think they slipped it in before everyone understood what they were really trying to do. But equity does nothing but produce mediocrity.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, in, in this equity, all of a sudden, I'm starting to read and hear, hear that they're talking about doing away from gifted, uh, stopping gifted and talented programs, stopping A P, because it's not fair to those others.
Right. Because they're, yeah, yeah. It just makes no sense.
It makes no sense.
No two people are equal.
Exactly.
None of us are equal.
Exactly.
I mean, uh, we have equal, we should have equal opportunity.
That's exactly, equality is not equity.
That's right.
And you and I both believe in equality without a doubt. And I believe, you know, you know, I believe in, in diversity too. But diversity has to be measured by merit. It can't be just by, you know, diversity standards. We have to have X number in, in this role. No, we have to have the best person in this role. And if we can hire and, and create diversity through that, yes. But, but I'm looking for, I'm looking for the best person. Our schools have to, are going to, they're going to have to compete. If you look at the, if you look at the, the school enrollment, it was in two thousand twenty, it was at thirty-two, thirty-three thousand. It's down to thirty thousand right now.
Homeschooling?
Well, people, I mean, homeschooling, charter school, private school, you know, we, we've got other options, you know? But if you look at that, you know, we get about, we get about nine thousand dollars for every, every kid that sits in a chair. So those two thousand that we've lost is eighteen million dollars to the school district. I mean, it's a, it's a number. It's a number. And so now all of a sudden, we're talking about offering a school voucher and saying, well, we'll take your nine thousand and, and go spend wherever you want. You know, I, I, I can see some merit to that, but here's the thing that, that really bothers me as a taxpayer or property owner in Amarillo and just a citizen of Amarillo is we've got fifty-five schools in Amarillo. Well, I mean, if I don't send my kids to the, to, to, to public school or if I don't even have a kid in public school, which at my age, I don't have any, any of my children, they're graduated. But you know what? I still own, I still own a percentage of all those fifty-five schools. You know, and the, and the average age of our schools is sixty-two years old. The nation average age of schools is fifty years old. Our schools are deteriorating. And if we keep taking money away from the school district, how are we going to keep these, these assets, you know, you know, up to, up to grade? I mean, there are, there's multiple, multiple issues. I think it's easy for someone to just say, hey, let's do school voucher and give everyone a choice. Everyone's got liberty and freedom. I am all about that. But I think that there is a bigger, there's a bigger question and this is more complicated than just saying, I think I'm going to, I think I'm going to go take my kids over to, you know, to a private school and I'm going to take my money with me.
Well, the other thing that could happen, just to play devil's advocate, is the public schools get their act together.
Exactly.
And then they take away the students from the private schools.
Right.
And the private schools all go broke. And then they bring in all that more revenue because they've competed.
Competed and.
Improved.
That's right.
And are doing a good job.
Yes. My, my kids, my kids went to, to both public school, schools and ended up in private schools. So, you know, you know, I was in, I had the ability, my wife and I had the ability that we could send our, our kids to, you know, to private schools. You know, they got a, they got a, a good education there. They did not have everything offered that the public schools have. So you're, you're not going to get the same experience and what is that experience worth? That's up for a family to decide.
Yeah. Every school shouldn't provide the same experience.
Yes, yes, exactly. But, you know, I mean, if you think about it, they, you know, the national average, ninety-one percent of all kids are in public schools. Okay? So if we look at, if we look at Amarillo as, as an example, we have thirty thousand, thirty thousand students in A I S D. I don't believe that we have three thousand private school kids though. I don't, I don't think that we have, I don't think that we have the capacity for three thousand. So I think our number is higher than that, than that nine, ten percent number, you know?
I guess you have a lot of people homeschooling.
They, they sure might be.
I know we do.
Yeah. But, but if you just look at, we, we know we've lost two thousand. Now, out of that two thousand, are they in private schools? Did they move? Are they homeschooled? You know, but it's, you know, what we have to remember is we still have, we still have, you know, twenty-six thousand kids that we have to take care of. And, and do we need to up our game? Yes, we do need to up our game. There's no doubt about that.
I think there's probably, there's a lot of smart people out there. But I think you could look at, maybe there's a better way to teach and maybe there's a better way to fund schools. And maybe we just need to relook at the whole concept of what we're doing. That's maybe an outdated, obsolete concept.
Right.
And everything needs to be, you know, with technology today. You know, we're, we're, we're sitting here, five years ago, we probably couldn't be, even be doing this.
Couldn't be doing this, yeah.
Um, but you have one really good teacher, right, in history.
Mm-hmm.
That could be recorded and sent to every school in Texas, Texas history. And just a phenomenal course to learn everything about Texas history. And you could do that on a lot of different subjects, not every, but just a few things like that. You could cut down the cost, I would think of educating by a lot, just by looking at doing simple things like that.
I mean, Dan, I mean, it's such a great idea. I mean, look at, look at the churches today that have one, one main church and they have ten satellites, twenty satellites, you know? And because they've got one amazing preacher that is able to bring the word, and then what did they do? They satellite that in there and then they have a, they have a pastor on staff that pastors that church, but he's not the preacher. So, I mean, they've shown that this works. So, I mean, that's a, that's a prime example of being able to do that. I don't believe, and I, and I, you know, I, I think that COVID would show, you know, trying to do virtual at home. I don't think that works.
Saying doing it at home.
No, I, I think you're right. I think you're doing it in the classroom where kids are learning together and they, they're doing something, but they have a master teacher. I don't know what that looks like, but I, I think, I think that's starting, starting with a fresh piece of paper and, and saying, let's think outside the box.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just throwing out ideas that I think could help. And, you know, to me, your schools could be more, more county. I'm trying to, you want to keep your schools, it's about your community.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So a lot of it is to get people acclimated to want to know their and to know one another.
Yes.
To create that sense of community as they're growing up.
Right, right.
Because you, you don't have it as much today with, one negative thing about technology is it separates people.
Right.
So, uh, they don't, so that's a good thing about the schools. But I just think you could come up with a lot of different ideas, solutions if people wanted to. And you could save money and you could look at different funding mechanisms. And you could save money and you could look at different funding mechanisms and, but, uh, you know, that's all probably a different discussion for a different time.
I was going to say, I don't think you and I are going to get to make that decision, are we?
But, you know, we need to get it out there and let people start talking about things like that.
You bet.
You just have to, they could start it in Amarillo for one subject and see how it works.
Right, right.
And then they could take the people learning in high school, learning about film and audio and all that to put it together.
Right.
You know? And then let the teachers compete. They could have more than one teacher and every, you know, there's just a lot of things you could do.
Yeah. I think you're right. I think you're right about that.
But that doesn't solve the immediate problem. But so the role of the school board really is you hire and fire the superintendent and your oversight over the budget.
Right.
And you also work through employee issues at the school district.
And you set policies.
And set policies.
Yes. Which, which I believe is a, I, I, I believe that that's an important role there.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is why did all this D E I and what's the other acronym that they use? Uh, you have the D E I, which was, uh, equity, something else.
It's diversity, equity and inclusion. And then there's criti- critical race theory.
Critical race theory.
Which, which was outlawed, but they, they still, you, you, you can read and people say they're still slipping that into, into the curriculum, you know, in, you know, in different, in different forms.
So this got in because the school boards in the past just weren't really paying attention?
Well, I, I can't say that.
Or the parents weren't paying attention?
Let me, let me say, I can, I can talk to that. I believe that COVID created the teacher, the parents had to get involved. And the parents got involved and they realized no longer do I just take my hands off the wheel and send the kids to school and go, well, y'all are going to teach them. Y'all are going to prepare them. Y'all are going to make sure that they're safe. You know, and now all of a sudden we get into COVID, kids, kids are, you know, are doing things at home. The, the parents are starting to, you know, to read what their kids are working on. And all of a sudden questions are starting to, you know, be asked and, you know, and cats out of the bag, you know, on that.
The parents became engaged.
And it, that is a force to be reckoned with. And parents should have parental rights.
Yes.
I mean, the school is a, you know, the school is an employee of the city. The parents are not, we are not under the authority of the school system.
Yeah. We're the ones paying for it.
That's exactly right.
They work for us.
They work for us.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah. Well, that's, um, that's all, that's, all makes sense to me.
Yeah. You know, like I said, I've, you know, I've, I do not know what this would look like getting on the board, but I know that I can't make any changes sitting at home, you know? So, uh, you know, I want to get involved. I'm in a, you know, my wife and I, we're in a season of life that I have the time to do it. I'm excited about doing it, uh, you know? So I, I, I really, you know, really look forward to the challenge. And, uh, you know, I believe that, I believe that my, my values and morals line up with this community. And that's what I want our schools to have the, the look of our, of our community. Not someone from, from, you know, outside this area, outside this state. You know, we're, we're not. And I mean, all you have to do is watch TV and realize what's entering into schools. And we can say all, all day long, well, that's happening in Colorado, that's happening, you know? And the next thing you know, you start hearing, well, that's happening in Plano.
Yeah.
Well, that's happening, you know, and you're like, oh my goodness. I mean, it's seeping, it's moving this way. I mean.
Oh, yeah. Until it hits quid pro quo.
Ooh, exactly, exactly.
Yeah. It's, it's all here. I mean, it's, um, but I think we, we're fortunate that we live in Amarillo and, um, we live in an, I always say there's something to be said where nobody else, to live where nobody else wants to.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, right.
But, uh, so we haven't necessarily been on their radar.
Yes.
But I think we are now because we're getting to a certain size. And I think that's when these things start creeping in because we, people start realizing that Amarillo's here. So that's when that stuff starts really hitting us hard.
Yes.
Because, you know, we're, we're really critically important to the rest of the state.
This is a very conservative stronghold for Texas.
And if it goes, they, well, they took out Tarrant County. Now, I know how they did it, but people will think I'm nuts if I tell them what really happened. It's, uh, it, I don't think it's really blue.
Mm-hmm.
But they're working on our area.
I think they are.
And, uh, we've got to, we've got to stop it.
You bet. You, that's exactly right. We need to stop it now and not let it get in any further in. Because, I mean, this liberal agenda, I mean, they're, they don't care how long it takes.
No. They have.
They've got a long-term plan.
Understand why it's so, these people never rest. I mean, it's like evil and it never gives up.
That's right. And all they want you to do is, well, just give a little, budge a little. I, I, I don't want to budge at all.
Right.
I, I mean, truth is truth. It's not relative and we're not going to succumb to a little bit of pressure. All you do with pressure is you pressure back.
That's right. Times 10.
The times 10. Exactly.
Don't give them an inch.
That's right.
And, uh, then go on the offense and take them out.
Right.
The way I look at it.
Right. Storm the gates.
Yeah. But yeah, we, we have to take it, take our schools back and our county back and our cities back.
Mm-hmm.
And I think people are waking up to that.
I think they are too.
And, um, you know, I'm very pleased that we have such a good crop of candidates running for all positions.
Bet.
That, uh, that, that gives me hope.
Gives you hope, yeah.
And I hope people will come out and vote and show up at the polls and give their input. And I think people are starting to realize that their complacency is what really caused the problem.
Right.
And when people don't show up and vote, then we get things happen like happened in the city of Amarillo City Council. Where if, 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 um, Alex Fairley hadn't have stood up, what would have happened to the people in Amarillo is just, I think, uh, almost incomprehensible. The tax increases that would have happened. And it, people wouldn't have been able to afford it. And they don't realize that.
Right.
I don't think they have any concept of what was going on. So, but now they're realizing it and I think they're at least becoming engaged.
I think we'll probably see one of our, our, our largest, you know, voter turnouts this, you know, for this election.
I sure hope so.
I think, I think people, you know, just like in this school, there, people have become aware and hopefully they say, I'm, my vote counts because it does count.
Yeah.
You know?
And I always tell people, I don't care how you vote.
Just vote.
Be informed.
Right.
If you're informed, make a good decision.
Right.
Based on what you believe and, and let the chips fall where they may.
That's right. No vote is a vote though, Dan.
That's right. It is.
You know, I tell people that. You, you know, you say you can't make a difference. Well, you've just made a difference by not voting.
That's right. And what I tell people is if you don't know a candidate on that race, do not guess.
Exactly. It's better to.
Because that's not fair to the people that know. And there's nothing wrong with skipping a race.
That's right.
I mean, that's doing the right thing.
Right.
So I, but I can see races where people just, I can tell they guessed.
Yeah.
And that's just not good.
Well, for, for instance, this, you know, the, the school board election, you know, uh, you know, it's cumulative voting. I promise you, I doubt if half the people understand what cumulative voting means.
Yeah.
I've talked to people, you know, just, just last night while I was passing out yard sign, I said, you know, it's cumulative voting, vote for me three times. And they said, do what? They said, I thought I had to vote three times. And they think I've got a, I've got three votes. I have to vote for three different people. Or they think, I'll just vote once and I won't vote the other two. So they either, you know, they either, you know, give away, you know, two, two votes or, or they just split them up thinking that they have to.
Yep.
You know, so, you know, I mean.
You know, that's a good point. I'm going to put that on my platform.
I think you need to.
A little course on cumulative voting.
Exactly. Inform people what that means. And, and I, I, I think that it is, you know, you just go in there. Uh, you know, I, I proof, proof the valid, all the, you know, all the candidates got to proof the valid, make sure their name was spelled correct and they were in the right, right order. And, you know, and it, and it shows on there. It, it, you can read on there what, what it means, cumulative voting means. But you know what? I, my wife says I'm the worst at reading. I only read the first line of her text. She's like, where's the milk? I'm like, what milk? She said, well, it was at the end of my text. And I didn't, I didn't get that far down, you know? But it, there's a block of type that explains cumulative voting. I don't think people look at it. I think they go in, there's three names, you know, there's seven people and we've got to fill three spots. So, you know, I think informing people would be great.
Well, and then they, they need to inform others because generally the people that are going to watch this stuff.
Right.
They're really smart and they're, they're going to know.
Good, good.
But, um, we, we, we're trying to get to people that don't know.
Right.
And there's nothing wrong with not knowing.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, that's what education's about.
Education's about. We, we should never quit learning.
That's right. Never quit learning.
That's right.
Well, do you have a website or?
I do. Uh, it's, it's, uh, traftonforaisd.com. And so you can go there and, and it, uh, you know, I mean, it talks, talks about me and got pictures of my cute grandkids and my pretty wife and, uh, kind of gives background on me. Just everything that we talked about here today, uh, you know? But, uh, if you'd like a, a sign, throw me a, throw me a, you know, something on my, on my website and we'll get you a sign delivered out to your house and, and, uh, you know, we, we just like, I'm like you. I just want, I want three conservative Christian people to win the, those three places. I don't have to be one of them. I, you know, I mean, I'd love to be one of them, but we've, we've got to have, we've got to have a, you know, we've got to have the majority on that board.
Yeah. I think we've got some good people running.
I think we do too. There is, that is a good list, good list of people running.
Yeah. I think you've got, got several that would be really good. And I think that's just great to see. So, uh, nobody, nobody's going to be a loser in this race.
I don't think so. I don't think so. You know, in that school, in that school, present school board that we have, those are great people.
Yep.
I mean, the, the, no one does this for the money. I visited with Dick Ford, Dick and I are friends. And I asked him, I said, so what, what's it look like, you know, getting prepared for this meeting? And he, he said, well, let me come over to your office. He came over to my office and he brought a, he brought a 10 by 13 envelope that was probably close to three and a half, four inches full of what he had to read to be prepared for that Monday night board meeting. I mean, it's, it, it, there is a lot of time, you know, and all of, all these board members, they are out, they are out touring all of the schools, seeing what's going on in the schools. What can we do to help? I mean, you know, I, I, you know, applaud all of those school board members for, for what they do for the schools because they, they have a, they have a, a real passion for these kids. And they want, they want the best for them. And I think, I think Amarillo does too.
Yeah.
I really do.
Yeah. We probably live in one of the best communities in the nation.
Out of doubt. That's reason, that's reason the wind doesn't blow us out of here, you know?
Well, I remember when I was in school and I had a teacher and I just remember he used to always say, it's not the place, it's the people.
It's the people. Sure. Yeah. I mean, whenever I've, you know, whenever I had my printing company, I could buy all the equipment that you, that, that was out there. Everything new, all of that. But it wasn't the equipment that I had. It was the people that ran the equipment is what made it work. And I couldn't do without them.
Yeah. You take some equipment that's a hundred years old. If you knew how to do it, they could do better work than what they can do on all this fancy computerized stuff today.
Right, right. Yeah. So, I mean, we just, we want to get out there. We want to support our teachers. Give them, we've got to give them what they need to be successful.
Yeah. I guess what I'm trying to say is it's not about money. Money isn't the solution. It's, it's about the, getting the right people that are willing to do the job.
Right.
And, um, we can, we can transform our education.
Yeah. I, you know, I don't want to say it's not about the money. I know what they don't, I know teachers don't do it for the money. But I think that we have to relook at, at the work that these teachers are doing and the value of what we are putting in front of them and realize the importance of that job. It's not a babysitting job and we need to elevate our teachers because guess what that will do? That will create more competition and more people wanting to become a school teacher. Because, I mean, they've got the passion for it to begin with. We need to be, we need to be paying them for, you know, the 18 years that they're seeding into our kids because they're preparing our kids to lead the next, to lead Amarillo.
That's right.
I mean, why would we not invest in that?
Exactly. Well, I sure appreciate you coming by.
You bet.
And I look, I'm sure we'll be seeing you around at some various forums and whatnot as, uh, we get closer to the election and.
Yeah.
Good luck out there on the trail. And if not, we'll see you May 6th.
May 6th. I'll be there. All right. Thank you, Dan. I appreciate it.
Bye, Steve.